John, did you hear from Sarada?
I did not.
Yep, we do. And the time is top of the hour, so we'll go ahead and get started. Are you good to go? Ms. Wilson, any good to go?
Yes.
Council and committee members all ready? Okay. I would like to call to order the Kaiser City Council and the Community Diversity Engagement Committee for a joint work session. It is Monday, September 23rd, 2024, and ask our city recorder to please call roll.
Counselor Reed?
Here.
Counselor Kohler?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Counsel President Starr?
Here.
Counselor Joram?
Here.
Counselor Cross?
Counselor Cross is excused.
And then with the Community Diversity Engagement Committee, Benita Picasso?
Here.
Tammy Coons?
Here.
Stephanie Cross?
Here.
Carrie Brown?
Here.
Thais Roddick?
Here.
Well, thank you all very much, and I'm really excited to have this work session with you all. We're going to be working through a number of issues, or at least talking points that are on our agenda today, talking about our, the appointment process for the Community Diversity Engagement Committee, talking through your recommendations, and then we'll talk about the application and rubric, and then following on with additional information for the volunteer application, youth counselor application, and then we'll talk about the interview guidelines. So that's what we have outlined here. Is there anything that you want to make sure that we include? Okay, generally, we don't have public comment included, but we can as we proceed. So it's not on the agenda. Would you like to add public comment to the agenda?
I think there are people here that would like to comment, yes.
So you would like to add that to the agenda?
Yes.
Thank you. Everybody good with that? What we can do is, we can take that up front, or we can take it after we've gone through the conversation, is there a preference on when in the agenda that would occur? Okay, we'll take it up. Let's go ahead and go through the first part of this process, which is to the staff report and about the CDEC member appointment process. Counselor Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think if we had public comment, we ought to just let them talk.
Right, do you want to do it at the top of the meeting and then get into the agenda items themselves?
Sure, like we do with most of our other meetings.
All right, we can do that. I just didn't hear a preference. Okay, everybody good with that by consensus? Let's go ahead and do that then. Since we did not have signups and so forth, I would like to open the floor for public comment. This time is provided for folks to address this work session. Of course, it's not like a council meeting, but the same rules apply. So is there anyone who would like to address this, the work session this evening? Come on up. And just so everybody knows, it's the same process as always, name, city of residence for the record, and you have five minutes. Thanks for joining us.
All right, I'm Leslie Reiswick, and I am a part of the Volunteer Coordinating Committee, and Cory, myself, and Jane came last time to your pre-meeting. I don't know the official terms of it, but I had some questions as far as definitions. So I liked the application. I liked that you guys put in the work for specific questions for your committee. However, I was a little apprehensive about language. So when you use certain words, they can be termed in different ways. And what I was concerned about, and also in that meeting, there was an additional, I think it was Tammy, that suggested on some of those that we add justice into the questions. And I think those are, for me, I'm thinking simplistically, like we have young people, we have got people at different educational backgrounds, and I just didn't like the language. And so I didn't know if that was something that could be changed in those questions in the application, and if you guys would consider that. Because for me, I would want to say in that because we will be asking those questions and reviewing them. So that was kind of my thoughts after the fact, after looking through the information, so.
I'd like to ask a clarifying question, if that'd be all right?
Yeah.
So are you, what is your recommendation for the change of the question?
So I was simplistic language. So when you bring up diversity, equity, inclusion, and justice, to me, it brings up a lot of politics right now, the climate of things. And so I wanted also, for me, those are still like loose definitions, right? People can change those words, and I've seen it a lot. I read your recommendations on those words, but I didn't see the definition for justice. And so I didn't know if that would be included in this application packet for those that maybe don't know what you guys are intending to use those words as when you're asking those in the application. So that was kind of my thoughts on that, is just making sure that the language is very easy to understand. So some suggestions I had, because of the committee's makeup and what you guys are intending to do is engage everybody, all people. So things that I would suggest is like betterment for the community, for all people in the community of Kaiser on some of those questions. What are some things you have done that unites you? So just different words that mean similar things, but in a simplistic term. So those were some of the things that I was thinking as we go through there. Also, how do you engage with people that are different from yourself? That is a very simple term for people to understand. So also, what unique qualities would you bring to the CDEC committee? Sorry if I stumble on that. But those were just some of the suggestions that I had for those questions in the application. Instead of bullet pointed equity, inclusion, justice, those things. So different language, but similar terms. Thank you for that.
Do you, yeah, I think we're all open to that. I mean, that was a draft that we're bringing here. It's very much a work in progress, and we can work on it as a committee. Would love to have you help shape that as well, so yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that was just some thoughts I had, just.
Especially if you're going to be evaluating, absolutely.
Yeah, I think the language matters in how we ask questions, and I think keeping it simple versus complicated. And so I feel like when you ask certain words, there can be a lot of definitions. So the easiest way to ask the question possible for our committee would be something that I would prefer. I don't know what you guys prefer, so I just want to make sure that we had some sort of say in that.
That's great. Well done.
So, but I liked everything else. I liked the rubric. I liked that you guys had questions because they should pertain to the committees that people are applying for, so thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. Anybody else who would like to offer public comment at this time? Floor is open. Okay. We will get into the conversation. Thank you so much for the recommendations for improvement. This is definitely a collaborative process, hence the joint work session. So I'd like to get into the first conversation, which is around the member appointment process. And this goes to Mr. Wood, and then I would like to turn it over to Chair Roddick for, you know, the recommendation that came from your committee to the city council on the recommendation for change for the appointment process. Does that work? Okay. Mr. Wood?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council, CDEC Committee. Not going to spend a lot of time on this. The staff report is pretty well laid out. The CDC has recommended that the appointment process be changed from a counselor direct appointment process to being handled by the Volunteer Coordinating Committee. In addition, the CDEC was also recommending that specific application and interview questions and scoring sheet be utilized by the VCC. This was initially brought up during the June 6th, 2024 CDEC meeting, and it was brought to the June 17th City Council meeting. At that point, the concept of, we weren't quite ready with the questions, so the process and the questions were separated with the idea of the questions going to a work session. We did bring back a resolution the following city council meeting to revise the appointment process, and at that point, that conversation also got pushed to this work session. So with that, here we are talking about, do we want to make a change to the appointment process? If we do, we can then follow that up with a question about having specific interview questions related to the CDEC group, and then that also gets pushed out further. Do we want to have that for all of the different city committees? And that's kind of where we're at, so I will turn it back over.
All right, any questions on the staff report? I'd like to turn it over to the chair to talk about the recommendation that came to City Council, specific to the CDEC. We'll get into the additional committees and commissions afterwards to keep us focused to start with this one, which is a unique among our committees.
Yeah, so we have, our appointee process is through counselor. So counselors nominate the members of the CDEC. And the only other committee that that, I believe, happens is the Volunteer Coordinating Committee. All the other committees, folks apply through the website, demonstrate their interest, and then are interviewed by the Volunteer Coordinating Committee. The reason behind it, and we had a good discussion, we kind of went back and forth in a lot of these, kind of what made sense. And for us, making it aligned with the other committees made sense in terms of how they're selected, asking folks to submit their application online. It broadens the applicant pool, so you're not, and from an equity perspective, it doesn't depend upon who you know. It's really based on interest, and it's open to everybody to be able to apply. It follows the same process as the other committees being interviewed by the Volunteer Coordinating Committee, and counselors still have the final say because VCC brings a recommendation to City Council. You still have to vote on approving the appointees. So we just thought that streamlined the process quite a bit. It provided folks the opportunity to apply through the website and increased community engagement overall.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts, comments?
Yes, I'm Carrie, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, and I just want to add to what Thais shared. I like this process because I think that there's more transparency, and it makes the application process equal. So there's no biases from one person, and we are able to get the responses from the same questions for each of the applicants. And that way, we have transparency and equity. And so that's why in our committee, we supported this process.
Other committee member comments? Question, oh, Ms. Picasso?
Nope.
All right. Questions from council? We asked that this come back to the conversation at the, at this work session, so would love to hear questions or comments for conversation. Counsel President Starr, you have your hand up? I just saw your glasses up. Okay, all right. Anybody else? Okay, I don't see, oh, Counselor Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When we first established this committee, there was some reasoning behind why it was a direct appointment, and I don't know that that's changed a whole bunch since then, but that's just, I think it makes it easier to see who's on the committee, see how the committee works as far as to make sure that the counselors' thoughts and concerns are represented, but that's why I spend time and interview people before I put them on the committee. There was some reasoning behind that to begin with.
Yeah, as we started it off, I would agree, there was a lot of thought that went into the startup. Many of our committees and commissions started that way for startup. So the question is, is that still going to keep on working or folding it into the normal Volunteer Coordinating Committee broader structure? It is, you know, what we're talking about here, so what would change? How could, what was going to change in that process? I interviewed the students because I had the pleasure of appointing the student voting member, and interviewed Navea, Ms. Music, who has now gone to college and went through that process. So opening it up now like our other youth liaisons, for me, makes sense. We get a number of students that are applying for committees and commissions. They could apply, they could click that box for a number of the committees and commissions as well as youth counselors. So from the point of view of where I'm making an appointment, it makes a lot of sense. Counselor Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have no idea where this fits into the conversation, but I would recommend that we make the youth counselor expiration date. Certainly not the right term, but in June, just to correspond with the school year. Everybody else is in December, but it seems to me that just changing that, that date would make sense. So again, don't know quite where that would land in the conversation.
Okay, no, that's a, that's a very good point, that the youth member would correspond with the school year. We just ran into that problem with Ms. Music. She's off to college. So I did get a text message from her. I said, so there was a mix-up, and your term ends at the end of next year. I said, but you're off in college. She goes, oh, yeah, no, I'm, I'm done. We both had the thought that she was, had finished up, so we need to make a correction there. So that's a good point for making sure that we get the details right, especially for our youth, being students. Anything else from council members? So is there anything else, counselors, that you would like to hear from the CDEC about making the change? We cannot make decisions here tonight, but what would help us in bringing this back as a, an agenda item on October 7th? Counselor Starr, Counsel President Starr?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think for me, it's a conversation, it's another conversation with the VCC, and whether that's a joint work session, because I feel like this is one committee making a decision that's going to put something else, put yet another committee on the VCC. And not that it's, not that that's wrong. I, I just feel like we have missed an opportunity of engaging the VCC in whether it's a, the joint work session. I think this right here, this joint work session for, between the council and the CDC committee is a great first step. But I also think that, I mean, I don't know how else to say it, but VCC, you know, learned about it through their council liaison, and that's what brought them to come to the last CDC meeting and have engagement, but it wasn't in an official capacity. It was really as, you know, a couple of members coming to speak, but not the whole committee. And so I think for me, before this recommendation moves from this committee to council, I think there's, we're missing a piece in the process of having a conversation and a joint work session with the VCC. I think they, as we heard from one of the members, they individually had, I think, some valid input and feedback, and I think we're missing it when we don't, we're missing out when we don't ask all of the members of the VCC committee in their capacity as a VCC member. So I don't, I want to be careful that we're not just pushing this forward, and I want to make sure we're hearing input from everybody that should be having input or feedback, because I think we, as we've already seen tonight, we've heard from one person that had some great feedback, so thank you.
I have a question on that.
Ms. Picasso?
So did we miss a step on the process? Is that how all the other committees were also going through the same process?
Well, so can I answer that? There has been no process, if you will, because we haven't had the same conversation. Well, I don't want to jump ahead, but when we're talking about using a very similar process with the other committees to include the questions, to include the application, we haven't had this conversation with Parks. At least, I haven't seen the public meeting notice having the conversation with Parks about it. We haven't had it with Planning Commission, although that's a kind of a different beast, but we haven't had it with the arts. So to answer your question, I don't know that we missed a step because we haven't talked to any of the other committees, but I do think it's important to hear the input of the people that are doing, well, input from all of the committees, and specifically from VCC, that have asked, that are the ones going to be doing the scoring and the interviewing, et cetera.
Thank you, Ms. Roddick.
I have a question for the work session, since it is a work session. The last time this came to council, it was a split vote, four to three, with Counselor Kohler, Counselor Joram, and Counselor Cross voting no. I would like to try to understand what are the objections of going through the VCC so that we can address them, air them out, since this is a work session. I heard from you, Counselor Kohler, Counselor Joram?
I would be happy to answer that. I answered it before, and I like having the direct contact of the person that I chose, and, and I believe it's worked well. It has worked well for me. I've had great people on that have represented me, and I had the relationship with them before, so I felt comfortable with that and knowing that, that what their purpose on the, you know, on the committee was, was aligned with my purpose. This committee has been going for two years, and the only thing it seems to have accomplished is this, getting, bringing this to the, there's very little that has been accomplished according to what we've outlined in Appendix A. So I, you know, I think that the group could, could spend more, more time on things that we've, that we had proposed initially, and I would like to see, you know, some things get done. So if you guys feel that to get more accomplished, you need to have a different way of bringing people on, I, I just don't see that being the issue because there has been so many good people that have been selected for this, so.
Turnover has been an issue.
Well, and it, and it still could be.
Yeah, yeah.
But we wouldn't know the difference until we try something different, right? So if we've always had an appointee, and if we try something different, that is someone saying, I would like to volunteer for that. So I do see the, and I think that Carrie also touched something important, is the transparency. So we're looking at transparency like all the other programs or other councils and work groups, and I think it is important to have the community, community's voice come forward, and this is a way to do that, feeling inclusivity and having that information or having that opportunity for the entire community to come in and say, I would like to volunteer for that, and not just selecting it into smaller groups, in my opinion.
Counselor Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to know, since, what, what do you feel we are not getting accomplished in Appendix A as far as the tasks are, are concerned? What, what do you think the committee could do better on, and how do you think that continued direct appointments would help that?
I don't necessarily think that it's going to change by how they're selected. I think the, the collaboration with organizations hasn't been, you know, I, my, my initial idea for this group was to bring people in that are not coming in to join us in, in these chambers, and I haven't seen that. I haven't seen outreach that, that we had talked about in the beginning of going out and meeting people where they are because they don't feel like they, you know, I kept hearing, well, they don't feel like they need, that they're comfortable coming to City Hall. So, okay, let's go out to them. Let's do events, let's do things that, that take what we're doing here out to the people, and I haven't seen that done. So those are the kind of things that we originally talked about. We originally thought this, I thought this committee was going to be doing, was getting people involved, getting people that hadn't, that have no clue, you know, there's people out there that don't even know we have a mayor. So that, that to me is like, let's get out to them and reach these people that, you know, either they don't care about the civic, you know, responsibility that they actually have, or they just don't know. Get them, you know, get people under the, get them to realize that, that they have a voice, and if they, if they bring it here, we'll listen, we'll do what we can to, to make changes for the, the people that, that want to talk to us. But the same people come all the time, and there's people out there that I would like to see, even if they don't feel comfortable here, like to see, meet them where they are and be able to talk to them and be able to say, you know, we're here for you too. So that, that's the biggest thing that I really was frustrated about with this committee is that those things haven't happened, and I talked about that in the beginning, so.
So I can address the involvement. We just started maybe this summer, a little bit before summer. Each member is assigned a neighborhood association and visits that monthly meeting to represent the committee and to hear what's going on. And we're working in a community engagement framework, much to your point about how do we communicate with the community. I think the Kaiser Turf Fields was an example of a disaster in terms of communication and how we could have been done better by the number of 100 and somewhat people that showed up. So I think there is engagement, I just don't think we're reaching folks where they're at, and I think that's an ongoing work. And we're working on that. I can't, I've been the chair for about a year and a half, so I can't speak to work done prior to it. I can speak to the work done while we've been working together, so. Any other concerns that you'd like to bring up in terms of, you know, that we could do better? Oh, Carrie, go ahead.
Thank you, Counselor Joram. I believe that this is the first time that I have heard you speak to us about some of your concerns, and I really welcome that because a couple of months ago, I wanted to hear from you, and I did not. So I really thank you and welcome you. I just want to share a couple of things regarding to what you have said. In my opinion, there is a disconnect between the, the system that we use to select a member of this committee and what you expect, not you necessarily, but because you mentioned that and what you expect us to accomplish, and I would like to comment on, on that. And what you see at this table right now is a very committed group of people. Thank you for nominating Stephanie. She has been a very, oh, constructive, constructive, positive member of this committee, and I have really enjoyed working with Stephanie. But you are seeing some of the most dedicated people at this table. One of the things that I struggle with is the continuous revolving door of certain people who are nominated to this committee, who I don't know how they ended up being nominated, and that's the transparency part. I think that if we have. I think that if we have the same, the same criteria to nominate committee members, it would help us to select people that are truly knowledgeable about what this committee is all about, therefore, they, their commitment level will be more significant, and we could, we could get more things accomplished. I really praise Thais for her efforts, since she's been chair. She pushes us, and I think that, that helps us to move forward, and this is one of the ways that we're trying to do some accomplishment. Several years ago, we worked really hard, and I think Laura was one of the leaders to guide us in creating our mission statement, and that was, that took us a long time to accomplish, but I think that we got to the point where our mission statement really speaks to what this committee is all about. So, I just want to share some positives and clarify some needs that we have, and how we can go forward in improving the goals and that this committee can, can achieve.
Really good conversation. So, I'm going to go back to the question that Council President Starr raised. With the, the processes for other committees and commissions, that has been the purview of the Volunteer Coordinating Committee. That is what we as individual counselors appoint them to do, so it is incumbent upon us as a city council to make sure that the process for adding committees, and we've done that in the past, this is not a first time, it just happens to be a, what I, I think has a very special mission and purpose, but it's not the first time we've created a committee, or since, and over my tenure, sunsetted a committee, but it's been then assigned to the Volunteer Coordinating Committee to do that part. I think that the conversation about the questions to help guide the interview process really helps inform the people who are doing this work. Going way back, when I first started, before I got on council, we didn't have an interview process at all. It was based on, well, I read it over, and this seems good. So, we've come a long way in 18, 20 years to have a more robust process, so I'm, I'm really excited about this conversation, about what is this going to look like going forward, so it is transparent, so it is clarification for the Volunteer Coordinating Committee. We're not asking you to do everything ad hoc, but we're actually giving some additional guidance, and then having conversation about what's working. Is it really bringing more and more people to the table, people who feel more welcome to be able to apply, to be part of our process, our civic processes? Councilor Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. May I address the Volunteer Coordinating Committee representatives for a moment?
You know what, I'd like to very much, but I, I want to make sure this is a two-way conversation. So, how, I'm looking to Mr. Lindsey, I'm sorry?
Isn't there a quorum?
I believe there is a quorum, one, two, three, four, five. There's four of you there? One, two, three, four. Who's VCC?
Well.
But they're not ready.
Right. So, and again, we didn't, we didn't, we asked you for public comment, but I don't want to put you on the spot. Mr. Lindsey?
I, I can sort of answer what I think is implicitly the question, which is, it's a joint meeting between you groups, and I would expect that the public would read that and go, they're going to be deliberating those groups, and so the notice wasn't really given for other groups. We did give a quorum notice because we didn't know how many folks might show up from different groups, but that doesn't mean that they're going to be part of the deliberative process for the notice that we gave.
Thank you.
Yeah.
But my, my simple terms is, I don't want to put people on the spot. So, I appreciate the desire, but I, I don't want to set up a unfair expectation. So, if there's a question that we can discuss here, and see if we can vet out in the.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll just throw my question out there then.
Okay.
In, in terms of the questions and rubric process, you know, this is, this is a first for our committees. Do we need to have all the committees in place before we proceed with this, or could we kind of float this out here as a pilot program, and then bring the other committees on as, as they are prepared to do that?
That's a really good question, and I believe we've already asked the committees, individual committees, to already start work on this. I know Traffic Safety Bike Ped has begun their conversation about what questions they would like asked, so this was already sent out to the committees to get input on potential questions, and again, I think that's a conversation that needs to have, be had with each committee, you know, what's going to be helpful, you know, these are people who are in the work. What would have been helpful for, as from their perspective of people doing it, what questions could be asked to set people up for success, what questions can be asked to stimulate ideas and conversation with the VCC process, open-ended, those sorts of things. So, we have already put that out there to the other committees. So, I believe each one's going to be individual, hence this conversation with CDC, you all have been through, you know, you know your work, what's going to be helpful, and the questions that you have brought forward are ones that you have, you believe are going to help people figure out if this is going to fit for them, and for the VCC to figure out their recommendations. So, I think that's where this conversation is going, as I understand it. Council President Starr.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One question I have probably, and I don't mean to bring this work to a pause, but where, what is the conversation level about committee members needing to reside in Kaiser versus being able to have people from outside of Kaiser apply to serve on committees and be appointed?
Um.
Because I, to me, that's important to know.
The qualifications for the committees and the committees themselves are really the purview of the council, and so the council can figure out if it's okay to have at-large members versus like people who are electors. And some, sometimes people choose that for different reasons. Sometimes they might choose, if you had an arts committee, and for, you got really lucky, and somebody who lives part-time in, say, Los Angeles, and, and a cultural center wants to, you know, they're from here, but they kind of go back and forth, and you could say, oh, well, we would have that as an at-large person, because they're such an expert, you know what I mean? So, it'd be a great thing to have, and maybe they had connections. So, you can really, subject by subject, look and see what makes sense in terms of whether or not you want to limit it to Kaiser-specific electors, or whether or not you want to kind of cast a slightly wider net, depending on what. I've seen where historical people in historical societies, they had experts that were from the area, but they moved away, but they still wanted their volunteerism, so. But that, that's just to say, it's still up to you.
Can I clarify?
Yeah, because I.
I don't feel like I got it answered.
Well, can I make one comment and then turn it back to you? Or would you like to just?
I would like to get my answer to my question.
Okay.
Where are, but my understanding is there is no rule or requirement for a residence within Kaiser as a, as an electoral, because we literally just appointed somebody to the Arts Commission that lives in Salem, hence my question.
Yeah. Well, for the Arts Commission, for sure, there, there isn't a specific requirement. I think is, the Planning Commission might have one, but I don't have the, the planning code right here. So, it is, most of the committees don't have that requirement, but I know, I think, I think Planning Commission is at least one of them, and I'm sorry, I don't have the specific answer, and I, and I would love to get, give you an, or give myself an opportunity to read.
No, I appreciate that. I just wanted it on the record that we don't have that requirement for our committees, so.
Most of them not, yeah.
For most of them, no. So, if this were to go forward in just a blanket, like, you can apply, it would, we, we may get people from outside of Kaiser applying to sit on our Kaiser committees, and so I, that is a point of conversation that I think does need to be addressed before this just is pushed out. Thank you.
And we do ask on the applications.
We can ask it, but we don't require it.
So, I remember maybe something changed, because we did a review of all the committees and commissions, and Planning Commission has very specific rules, and those are statutory, and I believe Budget does as well, but on the other ones, that we have a residence, and so we use the word resident rather than elector, so that it's not required that somebody be an elector, so if you have somebody who is a resident alien, you know, with green card and so forth, they're all eligible as well. That, I might have to go back and look at the language, because I remember it's either preference, or it was a requirement, that it was a maximum of one outside of the, who resided outside the city, when we were looking at the other committees and commissions. I'm going to go to Mr. Lindsey, and I'll go to Counselor Kohler.
I can add just a little bit more of information. The youth counselors all, the youth counselor has to be a Kaiser resident as well. So, I mean, there, it is really almost like a, a fact-by-fact search to see what is correct, but I'm happy to try to put together maybe a little bit of a, you know, spreadsheet or something that would kind of allow us to see that, if you guys want to have a further discussion about that.
Well, and given the inconsistency, that would be something, it was the whole idea of doing like the Appendix A, so that our, the resolution establishing a committee was going to be uniform to the greatest extent possible, and then the Appendix A is the one that delineates the specificity regarding the, the tasks and purpose and so forth for each committee. So, as I recall it, and I'm going to have to go back and look, because my memory was that we had intended that it would be limited to one, you know, maximum of one outside who is not a resident, but has a rational nexus to Kaiser, for the, like the example you just gave, someone who is maybe part-time here, but has a particular skill set, or a person who is a business owner or employee in Kaiser, but they reside in another city. So, but that's the rational nexus to Kaiser. So, we'd have to go back and look at each of the resolutions in Appendix A to make sure that those are consistent across all the committees and commissions. Again, budget and planning being statutory, and those have to comply with state law. So, yes, and yes. Thank you. Ms. Rodeck.
The language on Appendix A says citizen-at-large. Doesn't say Kaiser citizen, says citizen-at-large, so.
This for this?
For this committee.
Mm-hmm.
Each counselor shall directly appoint one citizen-at-large member, following the same process as appointments of volunteer coordinating committee members.
So, I think that's something we need to make sure we get that language clarified. The practice, Elise, as I understood it with the Volunteer Coordinating Committee, has been to, for Kaiser residents, and/or, and/or people who have that rational nexus to Kaiser, an employee or a business owner in Kaiser, where they have a, a stake in the committee, community. Council President Starr.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It just, I would like to do that first, make sure we get that, and then pick this up, because practice doesn't mean it happens if it's not written down. From my world, if it's not written down, it doesn't, it didn't happen, or it's not a rule, or it's not a process, or it's not a procedure. So, I would like to get that memorialized somehow, and get that figured out and sorted out as a step one to this process. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Lindsey?
If I'm hearing this, and if I'm seeing consensus, because we are at a work session, so we can't really make, you can have kind of generalized consensus, but not decision-making, so if I'm seeing generalized consensus, what I'll do is look to make Appendix A say something closer to Kaiser residents as opposed to citizen-at-large.
Yes, please.
Okay, and I will bring that back for your consideration.
So, it was resident.
Yeah. So, yes, resident, and then resident of Kaiser, and then check all of the, the resolutions and Appendix As to make sure that they are consistent, again, with the two exceptions that I think have to be consistent or have statutory limitations, and that's planning and budget. So, that would be a, a cleanup piece. So, following on from that, with that language clarified, back to the original question about putting this through the VCC process, and we're back to the original question. Counselor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In my experience, most of the committees that we have have been a requirement that you live in the city. The, the exceptions have been, like with the arts, and with the points of interest when we had that, and with the Parks point in case, we have Mr. Shackelford, who is a member of the Parks Committee, that does not live in Kaiser, but he's had a lot of experience with our parks, and definitely has a lot of good input, so there are some exceptions to that, but most of them do require that we live in Kaiser.
And for the record, Mr. Shackelford's business is here in Kaiser. So, that goes back to that rational nexus, which was the conversation around being able to bring in a committed volunteer, who, I'm thinking of Mr. Wallery, you know, does not reside in Kaiser, and in the past has been, not necessarily on committees, but that same idea, that has a strong connection to, either through business or commitment to the community. So, we allowed for that, but a maximum of, as, as I recall, maximum of one.
Right, and it's by, by committee. I mean, each, each committee's a little different.
True.
And hence my request for consistency and documented process.
Well.
Well.
I'm not so sure it's not documented for each committee.
I agree.
We just heard it's not. This is at-large.
For the, for this particular committee, that is true.
And my question was, and I've heard it across, like, it's not doc, like, it's been practiced, but it's not.
It's tacit knowledge, it's not.
The Parks Committee has that in there.
Thank you.
Yep. Get it done. Okay. So, that will be a task that, again, we're going to be going through. That's why I love going through these processes, where we find these spaces, where we can, you know, bring updates, alignment, and so forth, and for the Appendix A, for this particular committee, I think part of the conversation early on, for counselors to make individual selections, that at-large idea was to give city counselors more of a range of people to talk to. If we're going to bring this into the VCC process, it needs to be consistent where we are asking for people who are, again, residents, or have that rational nexus, if we want to include that with business or property in Kaiser, and have a, have essentially skin in the game. Okay? Councilor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Early on, with this particular committee, there was somebody that resided in Salem that I would have liked to appointed, but I was told they had to be a resident of Kaiser. So, I mean, that was my understanding for this committee from the get-go.
Okay. Well, and I pointed a McNairy student as, you know, as I understood the, the process as well, so again, we can make sure that this language is cleaned up in, and updated Appendix A. The, the question, once that is done, is again, what's, what's this going to be looking like going forward? Are we going to go to a VCC process, or are we going to continue the individual where, to Counselor Duran, as he said, to represent me, you know, each of us individually on that committee? Is that the direction we want to continue to go? Council President Starr.
Thank you. So, I think my question is. Thank you. So I think my question is, I still would like, as part of this process before that we have that joint conversation or joint work session with the VCC. I think that is important to hear their input, not gonna let that one, I want it to, I really think that needs to happen. Number two, I have, I have thought long and hard about this and I think that I want to just ask kind of a multi-step question here. I was not able to make the June meeting, but did the request, or did the vote to make the recommendation, well, first of all, aside from Counselor Reed and myself, everybody is appointed by their respective counselor for this committee. I think that we all made our appointments with the understanding and the belief that our appointees, that we would have good dialogue with them and good conversations. I think that goes for, I would hope it goes for VCC as well. But we all chose the people that we appointed for, because we thought that they would do really good work as our appointee on this committee. Did the vote of the CDEC at the June meeting by appointees of the counselors, was that a unanimous vote?
Mr. Wood?
Yes, it was.
So it was a unanimous vote by all the appointees that the city counselors have appointed for their own particular reason and belief that they will represent their, their work.
That is correct.
Okay. So if this committee then recommended unanimously to put that conversation forward to the counselor, or that recommendation forward to the council, and it was made by, that decision was made by people that we appointed, I think it flies in the face of appointing people if we don't at least have that considered at the council and taking into consideration that it was made by people that we appointed. And my caveat to that is, I'm sure people will be surprised to hear this, that I think it needs to go to the VCC to have a work session conversation with them as well since they're doing the process. Thank you.
Ms. Brown?
I would like to support what Shaney has contributed to this conversation. We, like I said before, we are a group of very committed members to the goals and mission of this committee. And I also support Shaney's suggestion that we work with the VCC committee. I would like to offer the VCC, and I think that all of us here would agree, that we would like to work together with you and offer you any help that you need, you know, to make this process as, as transparent and easy for you to follow. You know, we would really like to have you take this task because then all the committees would be chosen, members of the committees would be chosen in a similar fashion. So that's my input. And I would really love to help you in any way we can.
So what I'm hearing on this first item for member appointment process is that the city council, Counsel President Starr, you recommending a work session of the council with VCC or council, CDEC and VCC. Where are we going to be able to intersect this conversation to bring this to a consensus for moving forward?
Well, as I'm counting the chairs, I think we have enough for both VCC and CDEC and, and the council. So the more the merrier. But I will defer that to the chair of the CDC and the chair of the VCC and the chair of, you're a chair and you're a chair, no. So, but originally I was thinking just the, the city council and VCC conversation about some of that, but I'm open to all three of them.
Ms. Robyn?
So. I think all three would be important. I think if I'm hearing this, and, and you only provided public comments, so I'm not going to put words in your, in your committee mouth, but I think you were in support, were recommending this. I hear objection from some city counselors. So I think a work session to hash it all out seems appropriate. And, and I'm not saying changing, but addressing points of correction, improvement, and, and what we can do to work together.
Ms. Kuns?
Oh.
I, I second that motion. I think it should be all three of us.
So.
It wasn't a motion, but yeah.
We can't do motions, but.
Yeah, I know.
From the thought. Okay. Good. Counselor Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Brown, you made a really good comment earlier about how Stephanie Cross has been a great member of this committee. I, I don't know this for sure, but I'm pretty confident that she would not be on this committee had it not been a direct appointment because I doubt if she would have just come and said, hey, I want to be on this committee and apply for it. That, that's just my thought.
I'll let Ms. Cross speak for, for herself.
I would say that's probably correct. I did go in front of the VCC for a couple other different committee members. And I had been on the diversity committee before at work. And so it was, I was trying to decide if I wanted to have all that commitment again because it is a lot of commitment to this kind of work. And so, yeah, so that's why I said yes. But I agree with what we have discussed, with it being more transparent and equal to everybody in the city who would be interested in it, instead of just somebody saying, oh, hey, this person would be good at it. How about you pick them? You know, something like that. I mean, yes, we're here to support your ideas also on the committee, but we also have a deep commitment to the community and wanting to get them more involved also. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Follow-up, Counselor Kohler, and I'll go to Counselor Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick follow-up. Thank you for being here because you do make, you add to what we're doing and what we're trying to do. And, and again, I, I applaud you for saying yes, but I've interviewed people too recently to be on the committee. And, and I don't know that they would have filled out a big application and said, yes, I want to be on this committee, but I feel confident that they would make a great addition and, and really serve our city well in that position.
So what I'm getting from this is that to move forward in a joint work session to bring, bless you, what we're discussing here, the recommendation that came from the CDEC to change the member appointment process to a VCC process to make the corrections in the Appendix A. And that is something that we can take care of through a, an agenda item, coming to an agenda near you. So that's something that can be corrected in the meantime. And. And the June appointment for youth, yeah, the youth counselor to have that aligned. But that might need to wait because we're in a, in a limbo with our current youth liaison, or youth member anyway. I don't know about that one. Mr. Lindsey?
So I was looking around at the various materials. One of them is kind of the online version of when they apply for it. And almost all of them say each school year. So it's kind of implicit that way. And then some of them at the bottom even say it's primarily between 9-1 and 5-30. So I, I think it's assumed that it is that way, just looking at all, because I was trying to look through all the materials as we were sitting here. So I think you can confidently say, I guess as a council, I would ask the question, do you want a holdover for the second year? Because sometimes you might get a sophomore who wants to be there a little bit more. And so it's, it's only really if it's senior for sure, the hard stop at the end of the school year. Whereas if it's a sophomore or junior or something like that, you want the option for more. I don't know.
This was different. So in all of our liaisons, yes, it is the school year. So 9-1 to 5-30. But this one was different. This was a full three-year commitment on the part of our youth voting member.
Oh, voting.
And she understood that she is a voting member. So this is different.
Okay.
The youth member is a full, fully vested voting member. And she did commit for the full three years. Now, because of the way that the, of the terms were parsed out to have staggered end dates, hers ended up with a, an end date of next year. There was a one year and then a reappointment. And that's why we've got a problem now because she committed for three years and we really weren't, we were thinking, okay, she's done. But, you know, as Ms. Wilson and Ms. Bisset went and looked, and sure enough, her term ends at the end of next year, just because of the way that got done. So that's going to be a separate conversation to make sure it does align with the, the end of the school year when that person's done. But no, this is a voting member committing to a three-year term.
Okay. So the voting member for the community diversity engagement, okay.
Yes, specifically. This is very, this is different. This is the one time.
I will bring that change forward to the council when I bring the others.
Yeah, this is the one time that the voting, that the youth person is a full voting member on the committee. Everybody else is liaison.
It's the only committee.
It is the only one. That, and that was intentional. We wanted the youth member to have a voice and a vote. So that was, that was baked in. I'm gonna go Counselor Reed and I'll come back to Counsel President Starr.
Just, just in comment about consistency, you know, counselors are often actively involved in recruiting for the various committee positions and this would continue to be the same. So, you know, if, if there's somebody that a counselor really wants to put forth as a committee member, they can, you know, send them through the process like, like anybody else. And so, so that counselor involvement can still be there as much as any counselor wants to, to commit to that. And then my other point was, yes, this is a three-year commitment. However, as with many of our other committee members, some of them resign midterm for a variety of reasons. And so we just need to be able to make that clear to the, to, you know, the youth counselors that, okay, you're a junior, you're signing up for this, there's three years, but if you want to resign at the end of your senior year, then, then we can reappoint somebody in your stead. So, so we just like need to be more clear about that in, in terms of the process. There's that, they, they, they're appointed for a three-year term like any other committee member, but they can also resign as needed.
Exactly. We're not saying that you're, once you've signed on for this, you're here for the three years and we're not letting you out of it. That doesn't make sense. And that wasn't written or implied in that. But when Ms. Music was appointed, that was something that she and I did discuss. She was a sophomore. So it fit her timeline really, really well for a three-year commitment. She was excited about being part of the work. She was excited about being part of the conversation and to bring her, her youth voice into the development of, I mean, she was part of the startup. So how exciting is that? So that, that was part of the idea there, that the youth voice would have, you know, an equal seat at the table. But, and then of course, they go to college, I mean, or people move, people get jobs, it happens all the time. Life changes. And we're not saying, okay, you're, you're here forever on any of our committees or commissions. So I want to be clear on that. Counsel President Starr, you had a question?
Yep. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So one of the other things that, I don't know if we're going to add this to the to-do list or not, but I'm looking at, at the dais and I feel like the only two people that have been here from the beginning are Counselor Reed and I. Yeah, I think we are because you were not, were you here, no, nobody, yeah. Not from the beginning. Okay. So where, why I'm asking that is because, Mr. Wood, you may remember, and even Ms. Wilson wasn't with us in the beginning, when we had a myriad of conversations about going out and meeting people where they were. And we were discouraged from doing that because of the recording capabilities. So I, I bring that up because I kind of, I, I was thinking about Counselor Duran's comments. And I would love for us as a council, if we're going to be doing work on Appendix A, that we define some things like collaboration. Because I think we have, as members of the committee, tried to collaborate with other entities out in the community. But we can't do that as a committee because we were told, no, we can't record the meetings. So I think it would behoove us, while we're doing work on Appendix A, to define and maybe clarify what some of these tasks in Appendix A were. Because I, I wrote down what you said, Counselor Duran, about going to where people that don't participate are. We've had those conversations. But I would love to entertain, now that we have different people working the recorder and taking the minutes and sitting as our legal counsel, maybe if we could get new feedback or new counsel, new advisement on if we can do that or not. That's why we've always stayed here is because we were told we had to have those meetings recorded. So is that an option? Can we get new guidance in relation to going out as a group and meeting people where they are?
I've got one comment that I'm gonna kick to you, and that is, I love that. And the other part would be for the committee to be able to work on that, not necessarily as set in stone in Appendix A, but as a, a framework for work going forward. Mr. Lindsey?
So the public meetings law doesn't require a verbatim record. So it, it does only require minutes. It's a little bit harder, I think, to take good minutes. And hopefully, we, I, I know there's such things as little recorders that you could at least have along with you. And then the other, the other thing you just have to worry about is ADA access. So like, you have to pick a place that the public can actually go to and that people with ADA issues can actually access, so.
And we need to do public notice, right? We couldn't just show up to a community event without, without putting a public notice a week prior that we're going to be there.
Here's, here's the way that works, is if you knew that your whole group was going to go, but they weren't going to deliberate, you can do that. But what you want to do is do a quorum notice, just as a safety, so that the public knows, like, we're all going to be there, but it's, and we're transparent about it, but that we're not going to deliberate ourselves. We're just going to, you know, mill about and talk about people individually and never will a quorum of us get together and talk about our business while we're there.
I love, I love new, new ways of approaching things. And quorum notice has to be done how soon in advance?
It can be done, I mean, I was just actually looking at the, the rules that are going to go into effect on October 1. And so for, if it's a special meeting, it has to be 24 hours in advance. But it's, so the quorum notice sort of lies in there where if it's 48 hours or more, it's actually pretty fine, if that, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. So we've, as I understand, our next steps going forward with that one correction will be made to the Appendix A. Oh, Tammy, Ms. Kuns?
Mr. Lindsey, does that work the same way with the neighborhood associations hosting community cafes with a quorum notice?
Well, then.
Because I have been doing that with joint sessions, and I have one coming up in December.
It's a joint session with just. It's a joint session with just neighborhood associations?
December's is not.
Oh, what is it? What's the joint session, is it?
Um, it's going to be a safety awareness meeting with the Salem Neighborhood Associations and the Kaiser Neighborhood Associations.
That's fine, so.
With SCATS presenting, and Tammy Salvadore is going to be presenting, and Beth from Safe Route to School.
Well, so as far as neighborhood associations go, they're not advisory committees technically, so they're not governing bodies, so the public meetings law doesn't apply.
Thank you.
But if SCATS is there, that's SCATS' problem. So like, if SCATS is all going to show up, then they have to do their own notice, but you don't have to worry about it, because they are a governing body.
All right, I'll get a home mic.
Well, we'd have, we'd have to be, deal with a quorum, so I think we're probably going to be good there. But anyway, yeah, definitely check with him on that. I don't, it's going to be a problem. That's fantastic. What I'd like to do is continue on with the conversation, since we have everybody here. And this was, again, this, we can have this conversation, and it can roll into the conversation with the, with the volunteer coordinating committee, so we can have a preview of coming events. And that is on the application and rubric. Is there something we need to, on the said draft, nine, five minutes, that was for reference, correct? Okay. So looking at the application and rubric, is there anything that the CDEC would like us to look at in preparation for that conversation with VCC?
I don't think from our end, but I would love to get input in advance from VCC. When we get to that session, we can talk about wording and clarifying and just what Lindsay brought today in terms of, it's a work in progress, so we can work on that during that session.
Okay. Sounds good. Anything on the, the application and rubric on, from that? Because when we get to the youth one, I've got a couple of corrections. Okay?
One, one minor correction, and I think that was on the, on the agenda. Councilor Kohler was asking what we add justice was one of that, and we reflected that it's included on Appendix A as the values that were passed, so acting on the values included in the resolution for justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion. So that, that was the rationale behind that.
Yeah, and I, I think that, I want to make a note of that, if we can put the reference to our resolution on that topic, that would then tie that back in where that came from. So it is not a random, they're not random individual items, but that's actually the title of a council-passed resolution. So if we can put that reference in to the resolution, that might clarify where that came from, because there's definitions that are included in that resolution.
And I guess, just for clarification on that, so if we're referring to the resolution and, and the idea of justice, that would be in a staff report for this joint meeting. Does that make sense, as opposed to, I'm not sure where else we would reference it?
Well, yeah, there's, there was a resolution passed by the city council.
Yeah.
That is that. So if we can make sure that that resolution number.
Yeah, resolution R2021-3225, passed on December 7, 2020.
Okay.
Right. So if we can put that reference in, then it's clear where that came from.
Okay.
And that will bring some clarification, clarity also for anybody else reading it going, like Ms. Reiswick said, that has a lot of different ideas and, and so forth that goes with it. That's actually, we have the definitions within that resolution, how it applies here. So that should help with clarification, so. Okay, Ms. Cross.
Thank you. Could the council think about rewording that and voting on it again, or changing the resolution to take out that, to change it so it doesn't have justice, like the, like she said, so that when we use it, it wouldn't be such a, oh my gosh, what's justice? Because when I think of justice, I don't think of diversity and inclusion at all, except for when it comes to certain acts that have happened that are newsworthy, right? And so to me, justice is justice. I mean, it's supposed to be what it is, right? It's supposed to be fair and equal. So I guess I don't understand why justice was put in there.
That was a long deliberative process, and that was included by the city council to be inclusive of the issues that were being brought up, to make sure that what we are doing as a, as a body, as a local government, is grounded in justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion. So if there is a desire on the part of the city council to reopen that conversation and have it again, we could do that. Counselor Duran.
So looking at that resolution, there is no definition on any of those words, and I, I kind of think if we're going to be pushing this out a little bit more, maybe we should have some kind of definition somewhere.
The 3135 is the actual, is the, sorry, just to, the resolution that establishes this committee is 3225, but the one that is the Statement of Values, Justice, Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion is R2020-3135.
Is that in our packet? I don't have that.
It is not.
Okay.
At least I don't have it handy. But it was the, it's on the top of this one.
Where does it, where does it index that?
Right there, yeah, 3135. That was R2020-3135.
The date on it?
November 21, 2020.
2021.
Uh, no, the.
December 7, 2020.
Thank you. December 20th, 2020. No, it was, it was.
7.
Yeah. Yeah, it was after 2020. So that's where that came from. And then it was after that, the Community Diversity Engagement Committee was established in the following year. So the statement itself was a result of months of deliberative process and adopted by the city council. So we can get copies or send a link to R2020-31, 3135. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay. Are we ready to go on to D, the volunteer application?
Oh, that's right. Sorry.
Okay.
Oh, no, wait, CDEC application.
Application and rubric. Was there anything else we need to discuss, because that will be rolling forward to the joint work session with VCC?
Okay, can I make a clarification?
Council President Starr.
So you have the application, and then you have the application questions. And the way that this agenda reads is the CDEC application and rubric, and then item D is the volunteer application submitted electronically on the website. So you were asking, just to clarify, Mayor Clark, you were asking about the questions in the rubric?
Not necessarily. I was looking specifically at the application for CDEC and that rubric, that section of the packet.
Okay, so the application is in the packet first, and then the questions are second.
Correct.
Okay.
And that starts on, as I scroll through.
So, and just to clarify, is the rubric only for the questions, not the, so I think it's just.
The rubric for the questions.
So we need to make sure that just for those that are listening at home, the rubric in the packet under item C is connected to the application questions, not the general application. So just making a note. And the application, the rubric that's referenced in item C is actually in the packet after the volunteer application.
Right, I think we're talking about, you know, the scoring rubric starts on page 22 of the electronic packet.
Right, but that's after the application, which is item D.
Well, this is the CDEC application, so we're, we're concentrating on that, and then we'll go to the, the volunteer application in general, because there was a question on there that you have been bringing up several times, and we need to get clarified and get that off.
This is clear as mud, just for, so we know, anybody that's listening at home.
Okay, so we're looking specifically at the CDEC application. This is on page 20 of the packet. And this has the questions that would, that an applicant would be asked to fill in. This is what it would look like. And then after that is the scoring rubric relative to that specific application. This is what the different committee ones could look like.
I'm tracking, thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Reed.
If I'm remembering correctly, part of the discussion, and one of the things we kind of threw out for just discussion and debate, is that these would be interview questions in front of the CDEC, but then they would, the applicants would have a chance to see those ahead of time. So, you know, whether, you know, they had to fill out on pages 20 and 21, you know, they had to fill out this whole application as part of the general application, or if they just knew the questions ahead of time, so that they could prepare for the interview in front of the CDEC. So for instance, what that might look like is the general application on page 24 through 27 of the packet. If we had a link to be able to say, Community Diversity Engagement questions to be asked at the interview, so again, they would have that, and again, it, it, it doesn't matter to me either way, whether they do the full application here, but it just seems perhaps a little redundant if we're going to do the interview with the same questions. But anyway, just, that's how I kind of remember this, this being, coming about.
So if I'm following what you're saying, and I'll come to you, Council President Starr, is that the application for committee, and that's section D, what we're going to get to, take a look at the general application, so what, I don't know what you, what you all discussed, if you would have, make these questions available, that these questions will be part of the, these are the ones specific for CDEC that will be brought up in, that allows the applicant to think about them, and if, ahead of time, make notes to themselves or write it out, depending on, everybody communicates in a different fashion, some are auditory, some are, you know, have to write things down, so that way they could be prepared in the way that they communicate for that, for that process to happen. So is that what you're suggesting, is that these simply be made available?
That, that is a point of discussion. I, I think that would streamline the process a little bit, and will make it a little bit less redundant. And then we'd also, you know, as we can come up with other questions with, from other committees, those would also be made available for those. So we just have part of the, part of the application, say, for interview questions, click here. But again, that is for discussion. So, yeah.
Council President Starr.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to clarify, Council Reed, are you, and make sure I'm tracking, because I don't think that I am, we're going to interview for CD, we're going to have people come and interview before CDEC, and then we're going to have them go and interview?
No, 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 this would be the VCC questions.
Okay, I thought you said CDEC, which I think you did say CDEC.
I apologize.
Okay, thank you. I was having a moment of.
Yes.
Wait a minute, that's not how this is working?
You're absolutely right.
Okay. So these are the questions that would be.
The VCC.
VCC.
Yes. So for the VCC interview. And so on page 20, then, it wouldn't be the Community Diversity Engagement Committee application, but it would be the VCC interviewing questions.
That's why I was trying to sort this out for somebody sitting at home.
Okay, so, I mean, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that is something we discussed in the CDEC, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Just to clarify, CDEC would have no involvement on choosing members for the committee. That would be separation of church. Separation of church and state. VCC would make recommendations, city council would pass, they come to our committee. We have no say on selecting members.
Similar to every other committee. Correct. Where this goes through the VCC to city council to make those appointments. So with that clarification, what I'm hearing, and Councilor Kohler, I think I saw your hand, is that correct? Okay, so stand by. What I'm hearing is that what we're seeing on page 20 slash 21 would actually not be an application, but it would be a link from the main application specific to this committee. And with each committee, then, we can start developing those links for specific questions or guidelines, if you will. Doesn't have to be where the VCC is going to ask them, but guidelines to be thinking about in preparation for that conversation with the VCC. And I want to use the word conversation, so it feels a little bit less formal. It's a conversation. I've watched you guys work. You're having a conversation with people, because we're neighbors. And I think that giving people a time to think about their thoughts, what their interests are, what their passions are, what their experiences are, to be able to come in and have that conversation, I think just makes it a better conversation. So I, I really like the direction this is going. And then that would be a link from the main application. If you are interested in committee X, here are questions to think about in advance. Something to that effect. And the scoring rubric would have those same questions available to the VCC members, so you can get a sense of, is this the person addressing the things that are really specific to success on this committee? So that's why I see this, this structure going. Okay. Council Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Having reviewed this a little bit the last week or so, I, first thing, I, I think it needs to have the mission statement on here somewhere. If, I mean, if you're going to, if you're saying, I want to apply for this, they should know what the mission statement is, so the mission statement should be on this. Now, I, I also have no problem at all making this an application, but I think we would probably also need to make an application for each of the other committees, too, rather, so, and, and even have questions, and a statement said, this is what this committee is all about, because I've been to VCC, where it's like, they've applied for three or four different committees, and I don't know if they really knew what those committees even did, but yeah, we'll be on this committee. And so that's been a problem that I've seen, and I think that could solve it, but I don't have any problem with this being an application or making applications specific for each committee either, as far as that goes.
So, go ahead, Ms. Picasso.
Oh, I was just going to say, we like to be pioneers, you know? That's, that's what we want to do as Community Diversity Engagement. And I think part of the Appendix X, or A, I'm sorry, that we're talking about, really for Community Diversity and Engagement, it really starts within. So it's internal, and it's, it goes external. So it's not just going out and meeting people where they're at. Meeting people where they're at is the internal, are ready to welcome those individuals from the outside. So it's not, again, the knowledge just starts within and then expands. If we do that, we are going to be more open, and you are going to have more people coming, because they feel invited, they feel welcome, they feel like they are part of the community, based on the decisions that are being made within the city.
Um.
Council Reed.
First of all, I believe Ms. Brown had something to say, too, but.
Oh, I just wanted to.
I do have something to say, too, after.
I just wanted to agree with Councilor Kohler that we should include the mission statement from this committee on the application. I think that would really be helpful. So I agree with that.
So if we're doing a, if you have your main, your main application, and you click the, the box for Community Diversity Engagement, it'll take you to a page with the supplemental, let's call them supplemental questions, for lack of a better word. It would have the, the link to the attachment A, that explains the entire committee. So again, so people can be really well-prepared, you know, what am I really signing up for? And I know that it's included in the packet for VCC members, so you're always reviewing, what is, what does this committee do? What's it about? And it's embedded in there for you. We want to make sure that applicants are well aware of what they're signing up for, if at all possible. Now, we can put links in there, we can lead somebody to where everything is, we can't make them read it. But we hope they do. I'm going to go, Council Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I, I would, I would recommend. So, I would, I would recommend, too, that we put this on the agenda for our upcoming VCC/CDC council meeting, because, you know, the VCC is the ones that should weigh in on if they want separate, you know, separate applications for each, or if they want the general with the links. That's, I think they need to weigh in on that since they're the ones going to be doing the work.
I like it. We're going to keep making this better. Fantastic. Anything else on this process that gets ready for the next conversation? And there will be a lot more talk about. Council President Starr?
So, can you just expand on your statement about this isn't an interview, this is a conversation? Because, just because I like to be consistent, if, if that is going to be a proposal, then we're going to need to come up with different words in the document. So, if that's, if that's a suggestion you're wanting everybody to consider, then that also needs to be on the agenda.
Thank you. It was a philosophical approach.
We need to either make it a philosophical approach that we put into action or not do anything with it, because we have interview all over here.
We do. And I know it's a very, it sounds very formal, but as we're going through the process, what I'm keeping in mind is what can we do to make it feel a little more friendly, especially in the way things are written or presented, so it feels inviting rather than?
Well, then, interview is not the word to use.
Well, we can be thinking about a new word or terminology that would help, again, make it more inviting. I have no problem with that. Okay. Anything else before we go to D? All right, let's go to D. That's the volunteer application in general. This is one that is used for all the committees and commissions. And that starts on page? Just go right past it. Thank you. There it is. Okay, so we have that. So, this is the one that is used on our website. So, it's been updated. Thank you to Ms. Wilson and Ms. Bissett for helping make sure that this is updated. Any changes?
Can you walk us through what those updates were, because I have some questions?
The only update that I did was I translated it with the Google translation.
Okay, so the translation is the update?
Yes.
Thank you. I have questions.
Yep, I had, I expected that. Go.
Mr. Lindsay, has this gone through your review? And has this, what was the ultimate decision from CIS? Because I think I've, how long, I've been on council now for almost three years, and I've been asking for almost three years if we do background checks. And if we don't, why not? Or why, then if we're not, why is it on the application? And all sorts of different questions related to that.
So, to answer your question, this volunteer application I have not looked at until right now. But I have been part of conversations around this when you started asking these questions. And particularly in our ELT meetings. And there's a push and pull between how people might serve and whether or not, like, what would come back in a background check that would, you know, merit disqualification? Also, some, some committees, there's issues about if there's kids involved. I think that that's closer to needing this sort of thing. But then I think we still have to figure out, and this would be a VCC question as well, is what would be disqualifying then from volunteerism? At least our opinion on it, right? So that the council could be advised from them as well as from staff. So, I, I think this can also be a part of it. I think it is a good conversation and something that we should get squared away. But, but I think that background checks can be cheaper if our own, if our own law enforcement do them versus, but there is a time component to that. But then there, they could be more expensive if we were to outsource it. I think they're about $30 or $35 that way.
That is exactly how much they are, 35.
So, those were all of the kind of concepts and the conversations that we had so far. So, I super that you're bringing it up again, because I do think we need to to get input from the VCC and then also make a staff recommendation to council on top of their advisory opinion.
And if we could, like, highlight that in yellow with red exclamation points to reinforce the sense of urgency that I have been asking for three years, almost three.
I've just put two giant stars, and I'm, I didn't, I forgot my highlighter, so I'm circling it.
Giant star, that is. Just going to get that little label maker out and put that right here.
And I was waiting for that question, because yes, this has come up. And the, I think the question that comes before the question is, do we do these? And the answer we got back was no. So, if we're not going to do them, why is this on the application? And then, if we, if we decide it's worth doing after all these years of not doing them, why would we do them now? And to your other question about what would be disqualifying, what would be the difference? And, you know, we just haven't gotten an answer to that. So, I think the bigger question is, since we've never done them, why is this on here? I'd like to start with that one.
Madam Mayor, the other thing, I can just give you information, but I think we need to come back with a more cohesive opinion for you. But I know Ms. Bissett called around, and she could not find, there was like one other city that even did the actual background checks for. We, that, that is to say, though, if we had a library, we would definitely do them for volunteers working with essentially children. You see what I'm saying? So, so I think this was probably a one-size-fits-all, is my knee-jerk reaction. And for the vast majority of our groups, you're not really working alone with children, so.
But you could be around them.
I know, I know.
And that was, I think, the answer that I got, too, was we had to check with CIS to get their advice on this situation. And then it just, like, went into Never Neverland, so.
I'm, I'm?
Into the stars.
Into the stars, but I'm bringing the stars to earth.
You're starting, I'm putting three stars by it right now.
Thank you.
It is star.
I will make sure and follow up with CIS. And then the other, the other idea is, in these scenarios, we're in a public setting with kids? Where, you know, where with multiple people? So, that's different than maybe one-on-one, or maybe isolated in even like a corner of a building or something.
I'm the wrong person to have that conversation with.
I know. And you know what? I have similar thoughts from being a prosecutor forever, but.
Okay, so we will get information back from, CIS is our city-county insurance for those who are watching. So, we'll get that information, and then we'll decide if we need to, and if so, when, and under what conditions that would actually make a difference in our decision-making. So, we've got to have legal guidelines. And with all due respect to VCC, I don't think this is something for the committee to decide. Yeah, I'm getting a, oh, heck no, from the, from the members back there. I agree, this is going to be something decided through legal, what our liability is for the city, and then that will be, that will be what we will use going forward, so.
I'm happy, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you. I think it would be a much better decision point than, I guess, I think, or I feel on this. So, thank you very much for that, and thank you for asking the question I knew you would ask. I'm going to go to Council Reed, and then I'll go to Council Kohler. You got a question, right? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to, I really appreciate that we have the Spanish translation, and we have some native speakers on this committee. And I would like to verify that these are accurate translations. I already see, you know, a couple of typos in terms of, like, where city should be, city that should be capitalized or not. And so, I would just like to get that verification. Verificación.
Thank you for doing that, thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
On it, Reed.
Google is always a good first step, but Google needs to be?
Google needs to go back to grammar school.
Well, then, that's my call auto-correct auto-wrong. But anyway, but no. Ms. Wilson and staff, thank you for taking this first step to make sure that as much as possible has been translated, and we know that everybody's using as many tools as possible, and that as each of us looks at things and gets input, that makes it even better. So, thank you, and yes, let's keep making improvements. With, that is, that's, takes care of that? Oh, Council Kohler, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The youth, the youth application doesn't ask if they were convicted of a crime or ask if we're going to do a background check there. Should we, should that be included on that also?
Mr. Lindsay?
Well, so, in the juvenile system, it's adjudications. They don't, they don't have crimes, and we can't even figure, we can't get that information, so.
They're not going to want to join committees, anyway, just saying.
But you know what? I think the, that may or may not be true, I don't know. But I think the fact that there's a whole different, whole different system when you're under 18. So, I think that's, that's a fair conclusion. Are we ready to go to the youth, Councilor Youth Liaison? Because I've got three corrections. Ms., Council Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just, because of the unique nature of the youth CDC member, I would, I would recommend that they fill out the regular volunteer application form, be directed to the regular application form, rather than the youth one, just because it seems to be more relevant. And we'd have to look at the details, but that would be, my recommendation is to direct the youth CDEC voting member to the regular volunteer application.
Okay. So, let's look at that, specific to that position, because it is a voting member. A voting, it is a voting position. The person is not an it. The position is voting. And let's make sure we look at that one, that, that application specifically relative to that position. Okay. Good call. Youth counselor. I have two things I'd like to recommend on page 28. Are we ready to go there? Okay. I'd like to remove the reference to a page program. We don't have one. So, it's the 1, 2, 3, 4th bullet under youth counselor. That was something that City Council discussed many years ago, I think it was before I was mayor. And there was an idea that we could have more youth involved. It never happened, so I'd just soon take it out. And the objection to that? Okay. The other one I would like to also take out is the, the next, let's see, where is it? Is the 1, 2, 3rd bullet refers to, will be required to attend Monday night council meetings? Yep. And at least one additional meeting per month with a counselor, job shadow. We don't do that. So, can we take that out, too? So, required to attend Monday night council meetings, period. That was aspirational, that the youth counselor would take advantage of the opportunity to meet with, to go to a meeting with city councils. And we all make it available, don't make it me wrong.
Let's just change the verbiage and make it available, or just say?
Encourage.
Yes.
Yes. So, but if we're talking about requirements, so we could, required to attend Monday night council meetings, period. Work sessions are optional, highly encouraged. And additional meetings with city councils or job shadows also encouraged. So, I'd rather put it there so that the youth counselor knows that this is something, this is something that we want this program to make available, both to the youth counselor and to our youth liaisons. You know, ditto, copy, paste. We want, city councils are more than happy to make ourselves available to meet with our youth liaisons and youth counselor. So, if we could put it that way, it's in there, but it doesn't say it's a requirement like it does now. That's all I got. Council Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to add, we'll be urging recruit candidates to fill their position near the end of the school year, but also to be involved in the recruitment of other youth liaisons. Right now, our youth counselor is in the process of putting together a video recruitment tool for us, so.
That's awesome.
So, I, and that's something that we've sort of informally asked of our youth, youth counselors in the past. But just because they've got boots on the ground there, it would be helpful for them to help us in that recruitment.
So, not specific, then, to their position, but to fill youth?
Other youth liaison positions.
Positions, and not, not during the end of the school year, because why should we put a limit on that? Because we are filling positions, well, we'll fill them until filled. So, we'll, we'll be urged to help recruit candidates to fill youth positions, period. Council Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Do we have any particular outreach for homeschool kids?
Yes. So, there's a number of us that are connected to the Salem Eric Christian Homeschool Network and other homeschool networks in the area. So, we've been active in the past, reaching out and sending that out. I'm a home, I'm a former homeschooler myself. Council Reed?
And I have encouraged past youth counselors to reach out to the private schools in the area and so forth. That hasn't happened, but I have encouraged that. And hopefully, we will get to see a little bit more of those in the youth liaison, or youth counselor reports. But I don't, I don't know that it needs to be codified, but just continue to encourage it.
Well, I don't think it's incumbent upon the youth counselor to do that, but perhaps add into our recruitment is to send out the announcement for the youth positions to all of the private schools, as well as to McNary High School, any of the high schools that Kaiser students go to. So, maybe work on just a, an outreach from the city. Here's the announcement, here's the links and so forth, and make it to all of the secondary schools. More in general, that way it's not incumbent upon the youth member. They can help, but I think it's important to be embedded in our processes. Council Reed?
Follow up, thank you. Yeah, and furthermore, just being, getting that outreach for announcements? You know, if they could just email us what's going on, and then we could get that information to be announced during council liaison reports. Just, so, so just solicit that as well as the recruitment, just so we have a more ongoing idea of what's going on with those other organizations.
Awesome. Anything else on the youth counselor pages specifically? That's? No, we're not there yet. 28, 29. Well, 28, and then we go to the youth liaison. Okay, page 29. There's one correction on the third bullet point, youth committee liaison, bullet point three. Will share information from committee meetings with the youth council. We don't have one. That was, again, aspirational. And what we can say is with the youth counselor. So, it'd be, I think it would be a good idea for the youth liaisons to be in communication with the youth counselor, similar to liaisons from committees and commissions being in contact with the city council. Encourage them also to send information. I love what our recent, recently, our Parks Youth Liaison just did an amazing job riding his bicycle through every single park, reported to the Parks Board, reported to Traffic Safety Bike Pit, and reported to City Council. It was fantastic. So, that sort of initiative that we saw in that, that student, I think, is definitely commendable and must be encouraged, so. That would be the one correction I have there. Anything else on the youth committee liaison? Starting on page 29. Uh, Mr. Lindsay?
Would, would it be appropriate to suggest the same language for the urge to recruit candidates to fill youth positions instead of just their own at the end?
Yes.
Okay.
Copy, paste from before. Yep. And then are we good with the terms? And then are we good with the terms of office being generally 9-1 through 5-30? Do we wanna get into June or we go with 5-30?
Well, when we, I, put a pin in that one, because there's something I underlined over here.
On the counselor?
On the, yeah.
Okay. So put a pin in that one?
Yep.
Okay. All right. It is pinned. Anything else? Okay. To your pin.
Well, can we, so we're at the youth committee liaison application now.
Yes, on page 30 of the packet.
Okay. Under youth committee liaison, the first bullet point, will be open to all age groups. If I could apply, since it's open to all age groups, I would love to like take a trip back to my youth and apply to be a youth.
Yeah, that's.
Well, it says between 15 and 18 on page 29. Yeah.
But you need to have consistency everywhere and correct that.
Yep.
Let's go ahead and put that in there. Yeah, they have to be between 15 and 18. So yes, let's put that in there. Will be open to ages 15 through 18.
And that's the only thing I have on 30, but I have something on 30, too.
Okay. Anything else on 30? Anything on page 31? Okay. Page 32. Counselor President Starr.
Thank you. Under the authorization waiver, if their records are sealed and they're only adjudicated, we need to remove the criminal background check language from the waiver.
The reason it's quiet is because I'm looking at Mr. Lindsey, who's looking at that.
Page 32.
I would agree that if you're looking at age 15 through, I guess, 18 technically, you could suddenly have racked up a criminal record. But because we're probably going to be giving legal advice on how we've proceeded and maybe codifying that, I would say scratching this is probably pretty appropriate.
Let it be stricken.
And then under youth counselor application, this is where my pin comes in.
Okay.
Because your last sentence on page 32 under youth counselor applications says term of office will be 9-1 to 6-15.
I remember that conversation and that, guess, that question I just asked a little bit ago, which is 5-30 work. When you're talking about a high school senior.
Yep.
Absolutely, it does. If it's a junior, and we have had a junior as a youth counselor, they're still here.
Can we just say till the end of your school year? Because I think.
I like it.
I think most seniors are done by the end of May.
I mean, you're done and then there's really done.
I was trying to be a bit more optimistic, but.
Senioritis being what it is.
Yeah.
How's that feel to people? Counselor Reed.
I would just, to make sure that we're consistent at the beginning of the school year to the end of the school year in, in all the places that it, it says that.
Yeah.
So that would be on page 28 as well. So, yeah, just making it consistent, beginning of the school year to the end of school year, and then they can kind of interpret that as necessary.
Well, I'm gonna push back a little bit because different schools have different school years. The Salem Kaiser Public School Year is different from our private school years and definitely different from a homeschool year, because every homeschooler gets to pick their own year. So we, I think, probably should pick the dates. So we have clarification. Otherwise, it's gonna be all over the map. And we wanna make sure that it's really clear for the student what the expectations are. So I think having a start date of 9-1 makes sense because it's generally around Labor Day and the first meeting then would be the first one in September. And that's a logical time after summer vacations generally are done, generally are finished. So I feel a lot more comfortable just so we have a clarity on start date that we're talking at 9-1. And I'd be really okay with term of office if we wanna say 5-30 or give a date, but I'm also okay with end of school year. But again, different schools are on different schedules.
Then can we say 5-30 or, or say 6-15?
I would say 6-15.
Let's go to 6-15.
Then if they don't come.
All right. Okay, we're all, we're all consensified that we're on 6-15. So 9-1 to 6-15. So we'll make it consistent in the youth council, youth liaison description and application. Anything else? Right. Counselor, Counselor Reed.
Just on page 34, taking out that background, background check as well.
Copy, paste on page 34. Okay, Mr. Lindsey, got it?
Yeah.
Yep. There is a star going there. Fantastic.
Big star.
Big star. For a different reason, because it's youth. All right. And of course, if, as you're reading through this, as you come up with something, please get that to.
Oh, the, yes.
Yes, yes.
Cory, page 34 at the top.
Microphone.
I understand I'll be required to attend Monday night council meetings and at least one additional meeting, so remove that language.
Yep.
That's now optional.
Yep.
Do you want me, do you want me to say and encouraged to attend?
No, I think you can just remove it, because that's a, I under, yes or no.
Okay.
Yeah. Let's take out everything else past the required 10 Monday night. Just check that, yes or no. All the other stuff is in the description. So with the comment towards simplicity, I think that, and do that, the same thing for the youth counselor. Oh, that is the youth counselor. Is it also on the youth liaison application? I guess it wouldn't say council meetings, because that doesn't make sense. So can we check the youth liaison application for the same issue? That, what the requirements are versus, even a simple sentence go, additional meetings are optional. Simple. But for the youth liaison, the only expectation is that they go to their committee meetings. Oh, of course, everybody's welcome, just like everybody, to attend anything they want. I like it. Anything further on the youth counselor liaison program opportunity, et cetera, et cetera? Good? All right. Let's wrap up then with the interview guidelines. I heard this, yay, wrap up. You've been very patient.
Can I ask a clarifying question about why this is in the C D E C work session? If this is a volunteer coordinating committee document?
Okay.
I think we asked for that to be in there.
We did, because we wanted clarification on the questions and also the guidance of what do's and don'ts for interview panel members.
But we don't have to, we're, this, for the purposes of this work session, that's not up for discussion. It was just more of an information.
Yes, for us to see what's available out there. Yeah.
Okay. So, and thank you for that clarification. We want everybody to know that we are trying to operate and provide information for the volunteer coordinating committee, that we're clear about the do's and don'ts for, again, the kinds of questions we should and shouldn't answer. We don't want, we wanna set the V C C members up for success. We want to see, set our community members up for success. So there's a clear expectation when somebody walks into the V C C meeting. This is the kind of thing I can expect. And very few of us are actually trained in it. There's some people here, I know, who run your own business. You do this. But not everybody appointed to the V C C runs their own business. It has been through, you know, hiring processes. So we want to provide the same information to every volunteer coordinating committee member for your success. Okay, anything on that? Are there other resources or information that C E D C would like to discuss with volunteer coordinating, again, for setting them up for success? So these are great guidelines. When we have our joint meeting, if there are other resources that will be helpful, that recommendation can be made and then we can bring that into that conversation. Wow. We got about time. All right, everybody. Anything else for wrap-up? Ms. Brown. Can you, Madam Mayor, can you give us an approximate timeline of where this is gonna go after our joint work session today? Because we are missing two members to this committee. That is true. And under the current appointment process, we can start the, Counselor Kohler can appoint somebody and I can start the process to recruit. And I've actually, I've asked Counselor Reed to get letters of interest from students. So we could, until this is changed, the appointment process that we continue, that we have currently is in place. So that means I need to get myself in gear and Counselor Kohler will also engage to fill those positions, because we recognize that having empty seats does not get the job done. So thank you for that. Timeline, we're gonna have to work with staff on scheduling.
The joint session?
Mm-hmm. But on a couple of the things that we talked about tonight, those things can happen. Some of them are, are staff-driven, like updating applications and so forth. That's not gonna have to come back to council for adoption, as I understand it. Those corrections can be made, some of them. Mr. Lindsey.
Yes, the, so anything that is in a resolution that needs to be changed, needs to be changed by council. But other paperwork that has to do with processing that follows the spirit of those resolutions, and we've heard consensus here tonight, we can change.
Okay. So only those items that will require work on resolution will come back to us in a city council meeting. But then the other framework that we would like to engage with, we will have to look at the calendar for that joint work session and get that scheduled with, with everybody.
Our next C D E C meeting is October 3rd, so we can include on the agenda discussing and having the definitions ready. So we have the definitions ready for our work session.
Love it. Cory, would you be able to attend that meeting? No, our C D E C meeting? Or one of you two ladies?
Possible, I might, I'd get back from that conference. We'll have already been, like, work states, but.
Or, or some. Or just one of you, that would be fine. Well, the whole, and the whole committee is always welcome. And as you guys are working on it, actually make sure the entire V C C is notified of that meeting, so you get the agenda, you get everything. And if you wanna be at the meeting, you absolutely can. And engage in conversation as well. But I think, you know, getting the work sessions scheduled, because again, we want to go ahead and wrap some of this work up and get it moving forward. But this is what happens when we really engage in looking at our systems deeply. And I really appreciate the conversation. Yes, Cory?
Can the joint session be after October?
Yes, yeah. So after, yeah. So we'll, we'll work together. Ms. Wilson is a genius when it comes to.
Everything.
That, that is true. And getting, you know, these very complicated meeting schedules. So it will go out to everybody. We will doodle it or whatever it takes to get that done. We'll get it scheduled and then we'll be able to have the next stage of our conversation. All right. Fantastic. Counselor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Something I've been thinking about. Counselor Starr mentioned that, that they'd kinda like to go to different places and have meetings and things. But I think part of the engagement that, that we're talking about can be one or two members of the committee. And you don't have to have a specific meeting for that. So let's say that you go to certain neighbors, neighborhood groups or things. You could do that, as individual members or as a couple of members. And I think that would be part of the engagement.
I think they do do that.
Yeah, that's on the meeting minutes and assigned. Now, the concern, and I will bring this up because you're coming to our meeting on the 3rd, so I'm gonna put you on the spot.
Okay.
Is that we can't, more than three of us can't be at the same place at the same time without a public notice, because it could constitute a quorum, especially because we're two members short. So that is the caveat, that we're looking for clarification in new public records law. And that's why we asked about the quorum notice, et cetera. We've looked into that. That's why we wanted to do some of the work. But I don't wanna violate public records meeting rules in order to get that done.
Thank you.
I'll make everybody's lives easier, but thank you for that clarification. And as far as, you know, what the options are, I think that's gonna be a great conversation for C E D C to have. Dive into this work while using Mr. Lindsey and other resources. Ms. Wilson, with her expertise on public meeting, and Mr. Woods. So you have a great team of people who can advise. And let's look with, I will be looking forward to recommendations from C E D C for options to continue to, for outreach and being in different spaces and places at the same time complying with our very important public meeting laws. So that's gonna be a great body of work to move forward with. And with that, we will, the time is 8:06. Thank you all.